Good evening. Welcome to September 9, 2025 Milbury City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Councilmember Ronaldie?
Present.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Present.
Mayor Feng?
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you very much. And for those who are able, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, and please be seated. It's good to be back after a break. And here we are, September 9. And we'll start off today's council meeting with this ceremonial presentation proclaiming September 11, 2025 as Patriot Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. And we have today joining us the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Milbury Bureau Chief, Aiman Allen, and also the CCFD Deputy Chief Jonathan Cox joining us today. And leading us to that, we have Councilmember C.C. Riley.
The city of Milbury, California, proclamation where us on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent men and women and children, first responder heroes and the patriots lost their lives in New York City, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania, leave their families and our nation with void and can never be filled. And whereas each year on this day, we remember the hero and briefly shout not a day, just as we remember how we can come in together, united and grief with purpose. And whereas the sacrifice made by heroes, passengers, firefighters, law enforcement, construction workers, colleagues, and strangers remains as of the courage and character of our citizen and our nation. And whereas we will never forget the tragedy and the sacrifices of this day, and we will always pay respect to our first responder and civilians for their actions. Now therefore, we, the member of Milbury City Council, do hereby September 11, 2025 as Patriot Day and the National Day of Savers and Remembers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Chief, and also our CCFD Deputy Chief. Oh, okay. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, good evening. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, Chief Allen, go ahead.
Aiman Allen, Chief of Police Services for the City of Milbury. Thank you so much for this proclamation and keeping first responders as well as the victims of 9/11 top of mind so many years after that dark day. A Day of Service is a tremendous way to honor their passing. And it's important not only to remember the folks that passed that day, but their families as well, also the folks who continue to deal with the trauma of that day, as well as the ongoing lingering health effects, because there are quite a few of those. So thank you for this. I'd also like to let the city know that we will be doing a moment of silence Thursday morning in front of Station 37. We do it every year at 6:59, which is when the first tower fell, then the first first responders were killed that day. So the PD will be out in front of the fire station that morning doing a moment of silence, and there will be coffee and donuts. Any members of the public that would like to attend, as well as city officials, are welcome to join us. So I apologize for the early hour, but can't do much about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Battalion Chief Casey Para with the San Mateo County Fire. Chief stole most of what I was going to say this evening, but we look forward to celebrating every year, taking that moment of silence we vowed 24 years ago to never forget. Take that very seriously in our fire department. So we do invite the community to come out with us that morning. Have a moment of silence together.
Thank you, Battalion Chief. Anyone else on the council? Would you be so kind to join us for a photo at the... Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work and all the sacrifices from our, certainly, chief and all the public safety officers and all the firefighters who keep us safe every day. Thank you. Proclamation proclaiming September 14 to 14 to the 20th, 2025, a National CERT Week. Joining us today will be the Emergency Service District Coordinator Bill Riley, CCFD Community Risk and Resilience Specialist Dina Gunning, and also our Milbury CERT Deputy Coordinator Brian Graham. And I see a lot of our CERT members here in the audience as well. Councilmember Ronaldie?
Thanks, Mayor Feng. Kind of hard not to notice some of those green vests tonight. It's always a good look. So we're going to be having a little proclamation here. So whereas the Community Emergency Response Team CERT program trains volunteers in essential skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. And whereas the Central County Fire CERT program, serving Burlingame, Hillsborough, and Milbury, has achieved notable milestones, including becoming the first in Northern California to offer CERT training in Mandarin Chinese and launching the region's first teen CERT boot camp. And whereas the National CERT Association has designated the week of September 14 through 20th, 2025, as National CERT Week to highlight and celebrate the accomplishments of CERT programs across the country. And whereas the 2025 theme, "Every Community Needs a Certain Kind of Hero," recognizes the thousands of everyday individuals who step up, get trained, and serve their communities during times of need. And whereas the City of Milbury values the dedication of CERT volunteers who give their time, energy, and expertise to strengthen our community and support residents and first responders in emergencies. And now therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim September 14 through 20th, 2025, as National CERT Week and encourage all residents to participate in CERT training and volunteer activities that contribute to a safer and stronger community.
Thank you so much. And then we also, we have the Dina Gunning joining us today, and also Bill Riley. Thank you for being here this evening. And also Deputy Coordinator from the CERT Team, Brian Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. We're very gratified being recognized for our community's emergency response team and a number of members in attendance tonight. Just a quick note, I talked to Dino DiRanieri, the originator of Milbury CERT, was not able to make it tonight, but he certainly senses his wife is not feeling well, so he said a little prayer. We are very fortunate to have such a robust team in the City of Milbury. And as mentioned in the proclamation, it's moving forward. Our classes are filling up. The next few classes are already looking very good. So I think that support will continue, and that goes along with the many things we do, including our, their communications part of it, our LEND program within the city as well. And that helps fortify our response, especially working through the city and being able to support an emergency operations center when disasters or emergencies occur. Again, thank you very much for this recognition.
Ms. Gunning?
Thank you so much. It is an honor to be recognized, and it really is a pleasure to see so many of our CERTs here in the audience today. We really want to bring home for everybody that the importance of being prepared and subscribing to our Alert system, so SMC Alert, if you're not already subscribed, to please do so at smcalert.info, is very important. Getting trained, as a lot of us are, and I know those on the council that have been trained and participated in the program as well, and came out during the Milbury Art and Wine Festival to support us in our efforts to continue our public outreach and education. So being informed is really important. Getting trained is very important. And getting involved, CERTs are really our force multipliers, because we can't all do it as first responders. And we know when we have an incident such as a major earthquake, that we will be overwhelmed. And we really rely on those in the neighborhoods to be the extra eyes and ears and communicators to let us know where the greatest need is. And CERT is doing the greatest good for the greatest number. So we are very fortunate to have such a program. As Bill had mentioned, our next session is full, and we have waitlisted folks. And then the winter session that will be here in Milbury, starting in February, is also half-full already. So we continue to do that. We'll be doing another Mandarin Chinese CERT in April, and another teen CERT boot camp in the summer for next summer. So very encouraged of all that. And we were so fortunate to graduate 20 of our youth at the teen CERT program, which included the Lions Club Leo's Youth Group, who have been participating the last few years with us and have role-played as the survivors that were rescued when we do our Skills Day and graduation. It was very fun to have them rescue the adults this time. So thank you so much. We really appreciate your support and continue to help educate the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gunning. Mr. Graham, you have a few words for us? Not, I'm not going to put you on the spot.
I didn't know I was going to be here to talk, so thank you. CERT has been real important in the community, helping people. Everybody should know certain things about their own house. What I'm going to do is give everybody homework. All of you should know how to, in your house, turn off the electricity, case there's an earthquake, if you need to. All of you should know how to turn off the gas. For those that don't know, learn, because they need to do it. Not the police, not the fire, not us will always be there. But you need to learn to do it yourself. Some, a lot of people here know how to do it. Those that don't, learn. Take the CERT program. It's invaluable. That's just a little tease of what you learn. So I encourage all of you, especially the council, to lead by example.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone on the council have any comments for our CERT representative? Councilmember Ronaldie?
Thanks, Mayor Feng. Just a couple of quick words. I couldn't be prouder of this group. Working with you folks for about a year now and getting to see these volunteers that are stepping forward, not only are these life-saving skills for yourself, your family members, your neighbors, it's all about community. You're going to meet your community going to these classes and engaging with the mountain public when you go to CERT events. So can't strongly encourage this enough. Hopefully, you'll be able to join us. And if you need to understand or learn when these courses take place, or the next available ones, you can go to their website, where they have all that information. And the best part about it is it's free, so there's no excuse not to do it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just wanted to say, you know, it's, it's nice to see how the CERT program has become as robust as it is and be able to help as many folks and train as many folks within our community, as you all have done the last year or two. And also expanding it to the youth and multilingual program, knowing that we have a community that is highly diverse. And in case of an emergency, I mean, you know, having the language skills to serve everyone in our community is so important. And so, you know, thank you for recognizing that, and thank you for putting the work. Because hopefully, we never need the service, certainly. But if and when it's required, we rest assured that these services are there and be able to help everyone within our neighborhood. And I'm just very thankful for all the volunteers who go through this robust program and willing to serve, because again, this is all about the community. And thank you for all you do. Thank you so much. All right. If you can, please join us for a photo? Okay. Thank you for all, CERT Team, for all you do. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation proclaiming September 15 to October 15 of 2025 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And joining us today, we have recreational coordinator Ms. Alexa Florence Roman, and as well as the recreation specialist Sarah Marcia. Vice Mayor?
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to appreciate and celebrate the cultural, colorful cultures, rich histories, and diversity of Latin and Hispanic Americans. Whereas this month-long celebration recognizes the valuable contributions made by residents of Hispanic descent to all aspects of American life, including leadership in public service, business, the arts, education, and civil rights. And whereas the contributions of Hispanic Americans have strengthened the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of our country, as well as enhanced our bond with neighboring countries. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides a unique opportunity for schools, as well as public and private organizations, to focus on the many Hispanic Americans whose lives have shaped our shared history and heritage. And whereas it is imperative to embrace our diverse history, so that all children can see themselves in our nation's past and know that they have a crucial role in its future. Whereas the call for recognition this year is to ensure that diversified communities stand in solidarity to create inclusive spaces with open dialogues for a more just and equitable future. Now therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15, 2025, or October 15, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Would you, do you have a few words for us? No? Okay. It's, it's not required. You know, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put people on the spot here, but I just want to make sure that people understand this, Milbury is a very diverse community. And this is a place where everybody can, can thrive, everybody can succeed, everybody should have a pathway to succeed. Milbury should, you know, it's, this is the value of being California and also being in the United States. And no matter where you come from, what language you might speak at home, you should have a pathway to success. So, and this is what this proclamation is meant to do, is to celebrate every culture. And thank you for joining us today. So if you can, please, join us for a photo at the podium, please. Okay. Next up, we have proclamation proclaiming... opportunity for our school, businesses, citizens, and government to partner to work proactively together towards a prosperous and sustainable future. And whereas increasing awareness and attention to pollution prevention is in the best interest of the Millbrae's environment and our economy. Now therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, hereby proclaim September 15th to 21st of 2025 as National Pollution Prevention Week. And joining us today, we have our senior environmental program manager, Ms. Peppa John. And you're not required to speak if you don't want to, but you're welcome to.
Thank you. I will just take one minute. I just wanted to thank you for the proclamation. It is my honor to accept it. But pollution prevention is really a team effort. And I just want to acknowledge, you know, the environmental programs team and all of Public Works, who have really done great work to help prevent pollution in our city. And I also would like to say it's a team effort. And this week from Saturday, September 20th, we have our annual cleanup at City Park, 9:00 a.m. We hope you will join us. And it'll start at 9:00, and we launch different teams throughout the city, and come back for lunch. And supplies will be provided. So if you can join us, we would love to see you there. Thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Peppa John. Anyone on the council? Okay, would you please join us for a photo, please? All right. Thank you. Next up, we have proclamation proclaiming September 17th to 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. We've got Councilmember Nguyen, and we have the Daughters of the American Revolution member Carol King taking the proclamation today. Councilmember.
Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas at this convention, the world's oldest written constitution was drafted by the United States, thus outlining the fundamental principles by which our nation is governed. And whereas the six basic governing principles for society include popular sovereignty, the rule of law, federalism, judicial review, individual rights, and separation of powers through the systems of checks and balances. And whereas the Constitution ensures the distribution of functions and responsibilities among three separate branches, and a system of checks and balances to calibrate those powers, ultimately ensuring the protection of individual rights and liberties. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration of which the which we will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, it be it resolved, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the city of Millbrae, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate the importance of this enduring document to our nation and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and responsibility we share as Americans.
Thank you. Ms. King.
Mayor Feng, city councilman, thank you very much for awarding this proclamation. The Daughters of the American Revolution is 130 years old, a society that was created following the revolution of America to the to become the country we are. The Daughters of the American Revolution stand for historic preservation, education, and patriotism. And back in 1956, the Daughters went to the president and asked him to proclaim September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. And it was proclaimed in that year by President Johnson. We're doing an exhibit in the library. Mary Adler, your director of the library, has granted us permission to set up an exhibit that whole week. So hopefully, everybody will come by and look at it. We're gonna give out little Constitution books for those people that really need to brush up on the Constitution or want to learn it or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. King. Anyone else on the council? Okay, all right. Would you please join us for a photo? the Peninsula Clean Energy celebrating the EV charging. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. One more. It's proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month. And then we'll bring the PC after. Sorry, Mark. We'll get to you in a second.
Whereas the city of Millbrae will join the county, state, and country in raising awareness of suicide prevention, treatment, and recovery. Whereas suicide is a leading cause of death in the United States, claiming the lives of thousands of individuals each year, and has a profound impact on families, friends, and communities. Whereas September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness about the importance of mental health, warning signs of suicide, and the resources available to prevent this tragic loss of life. And whereas many of who experience suicidal thoughts or mental health crises feel isolated and alone, yet their pain is shared by those who love them and those in their communities who are ready to support them. And whereas there is a critical need for accessible mental health services, community support, and compassionate outreach to individuals of all ages who may be at risk of suicide. And whereas for those who are currently facing mental health issues and suicidal ideation, the city of Millbrae reminds residents and people that to know that they are not alone, and that the resources for specific needs are widely available to everyone 24/7. Whereas the city of Millbrae residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other in preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate, and reaching out to local resources that are available 24 hours, seven days a week, including our local San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline, phone number 650-579-0350, or National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 988, or 1-800-273-TALK. And now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month, and calls upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention.
Thank you. And joining us today, we have San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commissioner Michael Lim, as well as the Youth Action Board member, Inee Lee.
Good evening, most honorable Mr. Mayor, distinguished city council members, Mr. City Manager, and the wonderful supportive staff and residents of Millbrae. Thank you to the city of Millbrae for joining other cities and the county in proclaiming September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month. It represents a powerful moment in reflecting on the immense human impact of suicide, while simultaneously fostering a renewed commitment to promoting mental health awareness and implementing preventive strategies within our communities. I can go on and on, you know, extolling the importance of remembering the work about suicide prevention. However, with me, I've brought a member of the youth committee. And I think it's important that the youth be brought in on this messaging too, and feel that they are not forgotten. And with me is somebody who is energetic and doing the work. She's smart. She's dedicated. And most importantly, she is she's a lifelong resident of your fine city, Millbrae.
Hello, everyone. My name is Inee Lee. I use she/her pronouns, and I am the co-chair of the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commission's Youth Action Board, here on behalf of the San Mateo County Suicide Prevention Committee. The 2025 Suicide Prevention Month theme is "Support Your Way." And it's a crucial initiative because it moves beyond a one-size-fits-all approach to mental health and suicide prevention. By emphasizing individual autonomy and choice, the theme helps reduce the stigma often associated with seeking help. It validates the diverse and personal nature of healing, recognizing that it may look different for everyone. This personalized approach empowers individuals to take control of their well-being and lessens the burden of feeling like they must conform to a specific method of support. September Suicide Prevention Month is important to me personally, because I've seen already too many people in my community take their own lives. All of it is heartbreaking. But when I hear a young person, especially someone my age or even younger, die by suicide, I become more and more aware that one day I could lose a loved one the exact same way. Suicide continues to be one of the leading causes of death in adolescents today. Thus, it is our duty to break the stigma and speak out for those who can't, especially for those whose lives we've already lost. Therefore, starting today, I invite you all to take action on one or more options. 998, save it on your phone and dial it when you or someone you care about is experiencing emotional distress or a mental health crisis. Educate yourself
our EV charging in Millbrae. And then we have the honor of having us tonight from
on what signs of suicide could look like. Look into resources in your community. Attend
Peninsula Clean Energy Director of Government Affairs, and also three-time Millbrae former
a local mental health event. Nomi Walks is a mental health awareness fundraiser and
mayor, Mr. Mark Hirschman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm delighted to be here this evening on behalf
advocacy event that will be held on Saturday, October 4th, at Seal Point Park in San Mateo.
of Peninsula Clean Energy. As the mayor mentioned, I'm the Director of Government Affairs. And
I'll be there with my classmates, and I encourage you to come too. We encourage you
we have something exciting to celebrate in Millbrae. But first, let me sort of set
to also visit smchealth.com to find ways to stay involved with the community throughout
the the stage and tell you a little bit about Peninsula Clean Energy. Refresh your course
the month. Finally, thank you, Millbrae, for recognizing September 2025 as Suicide
for those who are familiar and new information for those who may not be. If we could advance
Prevention Month.
Thank you so much. Anyone on the council? Would you like to join us for just one photo?
the slide, please. So we are a community-led agency. And thank you to Mayor Feng, who serves
Thank you.
as a director on our Board of Directors. He's also on our executive committee, and we thank you for that. And Councilmember Nguyen, who's our alternate board member and has been very attentive and supportive. And thank you to the community for for your support, and particularly the city staff has been terrific. So just the basics, we are the picture on the left. We are the generators of the energy. We purchase the energy that you receive, 97% of San Mateo County residents receive. And it travels then through the existing PG&E wires and poles, those big transmission poles that you see, and then the distribution poles, the wood ones that bring it to your house. And and then the savings, signified by somebody excited there in the last slide, is a result of the fact that our charge for generation is significantly less than you would otherwise be paying. At this time, I believe San Mateo County residents are enjoying approximately a 10% discount off the generation rate that you'd otherwise be paying. And Millbrae residents, over the course of the nearly 10 years that Peninsula Clean Energy has been in service, have achieved approximately $4 million in savings. And it's, I believe, close to $200 million countywide. We know from experience and survey, if you could advance the slide, please, that buildings and transportation are the two key generators of greenhouse gases and emissions in Millbrae. So, okay, we'll go to the next slide. That's fine. Nope, it doesn't matter. We're tackling emissions by expanding access to electric vehicle charging. And we offer EV rebates. We also provide solar on public buildings. And we try to help residents switch to electric facilities in their home. And if you want to go all-electric, we're here to to help you, and we have a wonderful helpline. In Millbrae, we've supported the installation of EV chargers at City Hall, at the Recreation Center, at the Corp Yard. And we've also been working to install solar at the Recreation Center. I think that's the bottom picture there, and that's me on top of the Rec Center building, and also on other civic buildings, including the library and Chakuti Building. We're working to install solar at the Corp Yard and look forward to moving that project forward. And we also work with local businesses. So if you have a local business, we've worked with the residents in, among others, to put solar on their facility or to install EV chargers. We know that emissions are bad for the public health and the environment. And according to the UCLA study, just 20 electric vehicles in a certain California zip code led to significant reduction in emissions. We know that multifamily residences are the toughest in which to get electric vehicle chargers, and that would include condominiums and apartment buildings. And so I'm delighted to be here this evening to share with you our excitement at having a ribbon cutting coming up on the 20th of this month at the Bayview condominium. We have installed 143 electrical vehicle chargers at that condominium complex. That is one EV charger for every parking space for every unit. And it's a chicken and egg thing. Do I get an EV, or do I wait till there's a charger when I get home? Well, at least we've taken part of part of that equation. We believe that this to be the largest installation of EV chargers at a facility at a multi-unit building, residential building west of the Mississippi.
poles that you see, and then the distribution poles, the wood ones that bring it to your house. And then the savings, signified by somebody excited there in the last slide, is a result of the fact that our charge for generation is significantly less than you would otherwise be paying. At this time, I believe San Mateo County residents are enjoying approximately a 10% discount off the generation rate that you'd otherwise be paying. And Millbrae residents, over the course of the nearly 10 years that Peninsula Clean Energy has been in service, have achieved approximately $4 million in savings, and it's, I believe, close to $200 million countywide. We know from experience and survey, if you could advance the slide, please, that buildings and transportation are the two key generators of greenhouse gases and emissions in Millbrae. So, okay, we'll go to the next slide. That's fine. Nope, it doesn't matter. We're tackling emissions by expanding access to electric vehicle charging, and we offer EV rebates. We also provide solar on public buildings, and we try to help residents switch to electric facilities in their home. And if you want to go all-electric, we're here to help you, and we have a wonderful helpline. In Millbrae, we've supported the installation of EV chargers at City Hall, at the Recreation Center, at the Corp Yard, and we've also been working to install solar at the Recreation Center. I think that's the bottom picture there, and that's me on top of the Rec Center building, and also on other civic buildings, including the library and the Chakuti Building. We're working to install solar at the Corp Yard and look forward to moving that project forward. And we also work with local businesses. So if you have a local business, we've worked with the residents in, among others, to put solar on their facility or to install EV chargers. We know that emissions are bad for the public health and the environment, and according to the UCLA study, just 20 electric vehicles in a certain California zip code led to significant reduction in emissions. We know that multifamily residences are the toughest in which to get electric vehicle chargers, and that would include condominiums and apartment buildings. And so I'm delighted to be here this evening to share with you our excitement at having a ribbon cutting coming up on the 20th of this month at the Bayview condominium. We have installed 143 electrical vehicle chargers at that condominium complex. That is one EV charger for every parking space for every unit, and it's a chicken-and-egg thing. Do I get an EV, or do I wait till there's a charger when I get home? Well, at least we've taken part of that equation. We believe that this to be the largest installation of EV chargers at a facility at a multi-unit building, residential building west of the Mississippi. So I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the entire community, those who are available to join us on the 20th to celebrate the new facility. We are doing this in partnership with San Mateo County Association of Realtors and with Go Power EV. The ribbon cutting will begin at 11 o'clock on the 20th. Because this is a private residence, we want to make sure that you RSVP to let us know you're coming, because we do have limited space due to the fact that this is a private residence. So you can, let's move ahead. Sorry, I didn't flip the pictures. We did that one, so let's go to the next one. So let's go to the last one. There you go. So there's an email address there. It's LMEEK@peninslicleanenergy.com. That's where you would RSVP. So if you could let us know you're coming, we'd be delighted to see you there. And I believe the mayor is going to be there, representing the city and Peninsula Clean Energy. I also want to alert you to another event going on in Millbrae that's coming up this weekend. PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, is partnering with the city this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for an EV and energy showcase. It's in the library parking lot next door here. This is for EV owners to be onsite and share their personal experiences with purchasing, driving, charging EVs, and have their vehicles, and an opportunity to learn about rebates and other incentives that are available to purchase EVs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschman. Anyone on the council?
Thank you so much for having me here this evening. I look forward to seeing you.
Please, go ahead, City Manager.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Hirschman and all the staff at PCE, especially when we were developing the Recreation Center. They had some priorities for Millbrae, the Chakuti Room, the library, and they pivoted with us to prioritize solar on the Recreation Building, which enabled us to get some grant funding and incentivize that. So I just want to recognize Mr. Hirschman and the staff at PCE for working with us and doing a great job. So thank you.
It's our pleasure. You're doing the right thing. It's great, and love working with you. So thank you very much.
And just wanted to say, you know, this is a major investment in our community, you know, 140-some EV chargers. Like you said again, it's a chicken-and-egg problem, and we're providing the egg before the chicken's even born. And just goes to show our commitment to decarbonize and keeping the environment as clean as it possibly can, and just making sure everybody can take advantage of these EV incentives that possibly be going away relatively soon here, but as quickly as possible, making these EV rode out as available as... Sometimes it's difficult because many folks, they don't, they want to convert to an EV, but they can't because they live in a multifamily, you know, complexes that may or may not have chargers. And this is our commitment to say, we're going to provide a solution.
Mayor, you make a great point, and so I would like to encourage anybody who lives in a multi-unit building or owns one, or has a relationship with one, or knows somebody who's in one of those buildings, to please sign up, because we'll be happy to share with them the do's and don'ts of how to get EV chargers into that multifamily building.
It's a lot easier to do that in a single-family home because you make all the decision, but in a multifamily situation such as this, things are a lot more complicated in terms of the decision-making and trying to get anything done. But this is a major step forward. So thank you so much for that commitment.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And moving on to item number two, agenda overview and staff briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide a city manager updates?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the city council. Even though we did not have a council meeting because of the recess, I know the council and the community were very busy in the month of August. And just a couple of highlights we had on Thursday, August 21st, our Beats, Brews &amp; Vines, this is our third Thursday downtown concert series. Justin and Jeremy Garcia, who we all know from Mills High School, they graduated a couple of years ago, also stars of The Voice, our very own duo with the brothers, Justin and Jeremy Garcia. They performed and sang, and also a very popular band in the Bay Area, Pride and Joy. We had a terrific turnout. We had over 800 people there, and I received just tremendous feedback from our local restaurants and downtown businesses. So this is really a way to identify and showcase our downtown and all the businesses on these third Thursdays. So just a great event. Also, our Art and Wine Festival, that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. We have beautiful weather, over 170 artists and crafts. We had great live performances from various bands, and Mills High School Band was there. I'd certainly like to thank the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce and all of the volunteers, especially PAC 355, the Boy Scout Troop, that just did a bang-up job in keeping litter picked up during the festival and after Saturday and Sunday. So a big thank you to PAC 355, Boy Scout Troop here in Millbrae. And of course, I'd like to recognize our city staff, Craig Centus, John Gianoli, Chris Valzone, Chris Junio, Joe Mendoza, Lynn Harkness, all of our public works supervisors and their crews were out, just a fantastic job. Also, our PIO, Annabelle Acosta, and the administrative staff back in my office to make this event a success. So thank you to everyone. All right, moving on to upcoming events. So this Friday, September 12th, we have Millbrae Goes to the Movies. The featured film is Dog Man, and again, it's at Central Park, starts about 7:30 when the sun goes down. So half man, half dog hero protects and serves the public while fighting his arch-enemy, Petey the Cat. So I think this is probably a big showing that can't be missed. So again, this is this Friday, about 7:30, Millbrae Goes to the Movies at Central Park. Also, as Mr. Hirschman mentioned, this Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. over here in the Millbrae Library Parking Lot, we have an electric vehicle and energy showcase, partnership between the Environmental Programs Division here in the city of Millbrae, San Mateo County Sustainability Department, Peninsula Clean Energy Promoting Electric Vehicles. And as Mr. Hirschman said, you can talk to actual EV owners, learn the latest and greatest on green initiatives, where EV charging stations are, also induction cooktops. And as I understand it, there'll be a loner program for anybody that would like to borrow a induction cooktop and try it at home. So again, family, friends, there'll be raffles, there'll be a DJ. So a great event to learn about electric vehicles and electric energy. Saturday, September 30th, 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. Also, Saturday, September 13th, starting at 1:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Millbrae Central Park, we have our annual Relay for Life. This is hosted by the American Cancer Society, and it's a walk to celebrate cancer survivors, remember those who have been lost, and to fight for a future without cancer. So opening ceremony will be at 1:00 p.m. There'll be live bands, line dancers, marathon in a fitness center, which will fitness all day. Millbrae Lions will be having a barbecue dinner at 6:00 p.m. There's a silent auction, face painting food. So this is a really great community event to bring recognition to cancer awareness. So that's Saturday, September 13th, 1:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Central Park. Also, September 18th is our Beats, Brews &amp; Vines event, third Thursday here in September. Mambo Street is the band. They're a very high-energy Latin rock jazz and soul, very popular band. We've had them before. And so everyone come out, support local businesses, enjoy a hopefully great weather and wonderful evening this time of year. September 18th, 6:00 p.m. at the intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest in downtown. Also, Saturday, September 20th is our Coastal Cleanup Day. That will start at 9:00 a.m. in Central Park. So cleaning up the inland areas, keep trash out of our storm drains. So no matter, you know, what we're cleaning or where we're cleaning, it does help protect our bay and our coast by keeping trash and debris out of our storm drain. Supplies for cleaning will be provided by the city, and for all participants, we'll be providing a lunch as well. So Coastal Cleanup Day, Central Park, that's Saturday, September 20th, starting at 9:00 a.m. Also, this next event, this is a terrific event that we've, our community or Economic Development Advisory Committee started with a partnership with a company by the name of Renaissance, and this is one of three business information sessions hosted by EDAC to help entrepreneurs and small business owners with resources on financing options, preparing loan applications, and connecting with lenders so people can learn how to secure capital for startup, growing and expanding their businesses. Again, hosted by our Economic Development Advisory Committee, that's Tuesday, September 30th, starting at 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Millbrae Recreation Center. So really nice program by EDAC on their work program this year. All right, next slide, please. All right, Mayor and City Council, as you know, about five years ago, we started an employee recognition program, and we have various awards. Three major awards are a Rising Star Award, Creative Innovator, and Employee of the Year. The Rising Star is provided to an employee that has shown a tremendous work effort gone above and beyond with three years or less experience with the city. The Creative Innovator Award goes to an employee that basically, cheaper, faster, better for us, looks for ways to innovate, stretch the dollar. I know that's foreign to government, cheaper, faster, better, but it's, we do it here with our staff, and we recognize that annually. And of course, Employee of the Year. This is the employee that has shown, you know, just tremendous and outstanding leadership, dedication to the city, dedication to his craft, dedication to the work. And so with that, I would like to recognize our Rising Star, Pixie Saligo from our Recreation Department, the Creative Innovator Award, John Rojas from our Public Works Department. John's not able to attend this evening. And our Employee of the Year, also from Public Works, David Bocelli. So I'd like for them to stand up and come on up and be recognized. We're here. And Mr. Mayor, if we can get a picture with our three major awardees with the city council?
Yes, absolutely. Please, with you in there, too.
You got to get your steps in, Mr. Mayor, so back up for a photo. And those are our three major awards. And also, part of this program, we have our department MVPs, and these are awarded, and these awards are also identified by the peers. So our local employees, we sent out a questionnaire, and they're nominated by their peer group as well as department heads and city management. So our department MVPs this year, and please, if you're here, stand up and come to the podium because we need one more picture with this group. So from the Administrative Department, Juan Yi Liang, she's our Senior Human Resources Analyst. I think you all know Juan Yi. She just does a terrific job for us. Talking about somebody that's innovative and does more with less, that's Juan Yi Liang from our office. Community Development, our recently promoted Associate Planner, Jennifer Lim. Jennifer joined us as an intern. She's a graduate from University of Oregon, and she's really come a long way in terms of developing and improving and doing a great job for us in the Community Development Department as an Associate Planner. In Finance, Bernadette Bernie Coons, who is our Senior Office Assistant. I think a lot of people in the community know Bernie because she's at our front counter at Finance when you walk into the lobby of City Hall, and just does an outstanding job communicating all things utility-related, and troubleshoots a lot of questions from our community. So thank you, Bernie, for a great job. Public Works, really outstanding engineer, an assistant engineer for us, Amir Zikra. Amir, I think he's here this evening. Done a great job for us. Project Management on Marina Vista Park, also took the lead on the basketball court resurfacing at the schools, plus a number of other capital improvement projects that Amir has engineered and managed for us. And then lastly, in our Recreation Department, Alexa Flores-Roman, our Recreation Coordinator. I know she's here, you saw her earlier. So these are our department MVPs to the community and council. So well-deserved recognition, just a great crew and a great group. So thank you for everything you do, and let's keep it going. So thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, if we could get one more group picture?
We'd love to do it, and also, you know, just bring your family members as well, because, you know, Millbrae in itself is a family, but also not only your sacrifice to serve the people of Millbrae, you know, your family, to a certain extent, has also had to sacrifice a little bit too. So this is really a family affair. So please, if you've got a family member, please bring him up for the photo opportunity.
And Leslie Mayor, I'd like to just recognize, we received a certificate of achievement for excellence for our budget and financial reporting. This is awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's also awarded for our annual comprehensive financial report, and this was awarded for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, so fiscal year 2324. This is the third year in a row that we have won this. And the program was established in 1945 to encourage governments to exceed minimum accounting standards, promote transparency through comprehensive annual financial reporting, and recognize those achievements of this goal. The achievement, the certificate of achievement, is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. So this is really a great award. Mr. Mike Sung, our Finance Director is in the audience. So Mike, thanks for leading the effort and great work. And so just wanted to provide recognition to not only Finance, but to the city council as you work late hours and go through budgets. We have budget hearings and budget workshops, and it's all of us working together to achieve this reward and recognition nationally. So wanted to just share that with the council and the community. So thanks again for a great effort and a job well done. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the update.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And City Attorney, Ms. Liu, do we have any report out from the closed sessions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no reportable action.
Okay, thank you so much for the update. Moving on to approval of minutes, we've got the special meeting minutes of June 10th, 2025, then regular meeting minutes of June 24th, 2025. Any comments from the council? Want to entertain a motion?
Motion to move forward?
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Nolte, and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Your votes, please.
The two sentiments are approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. Moving on to next item, which we don't have any oral report from City Committee and Commission Chair this evening. Now moving on to public communication. This is the portion of the agenda that is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item, not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, each speaker must address the subject matter within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have two minutes this evening, and the speaker is to address directly to the entire council, not an individual council member nor the public. Thus far, I have nine speakers in the chamber and one, or two, online, and I'd like to have a last call for speaker this evening. How many more? Two minutes each. So 16 total. Okay, we have two minutes each, and we'll move on this expeditiously. We'll start with Kathleen Guerin, followed by Jean Wong.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Guerin. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, known as EDAC, and thank you, City Manager, for promoting our event on September 30th. I am here to promote the Business Educational Series that we have, and everyone, please mark your calendars for September 30th, 5:30 to 7:30. It's at the Rec Center. We will feed you, depending on what Andrew will give us as a budget. So, and we will have two subsequent ones, one in November and then another one in January. So I'll be back to tell you some more about those, but hope that everyone here will mark their calendars and come and come to our first Business Educational Series. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Jean Wong, followed by Paul Harrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jean Wong. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a Millbrae resident of more than 27 years, I am proud to be living in a city that is an active member of Sister Cities International. Under this program, Millbrae has successfully established two sister cities and four friendship cities. Millbrae has an amazing 20-year friendship sister-city relationship with the city of Hanyu, Japan. Such a relationship is one that must be celebrated and showcased. It is an exemplary example of how two cities have forged and shared meaningful cultural exchanges and citizen diplomacy over two decades. There is no better way to recognize and honor this unique friendship-city relationship than for Millbrae to improve the Hillcrest Boulevard spur trail with construction of the proposed Hanyu Friendship Garden. Proposed garden with its tranquil Japanese garden landscaping will significantly enhance this popular walking trail for all to enjoy. When completed, the Hanyu Garden will be an international showcase of how a small city like Millbrae embraces, promotes peace and understanding globally through exchanges that focus on the arts, culture, education, and community development. The Hanyu Garden is not a new idea. It is a project that has involved active discussions and planning by many people in our community over the past two years, with the full support of the Sister City Committee, Parks and Rec Commission, as well as City Council. I urge council to remember the genesis of the Hanyu Friendship Garden proposal. It is unfortunate that recent opposition to the friendship garden, which has been based much on misinformation and lack of knowledge, has distracted council from approving the development and construction of the garden to commence as soon as possible. The residents of Millbrae deserve to have a beautiful garden to honor our friendship city, Hanyu. The Hanyu Friendship Garden will be a reaffirmation of Millbrae's commitment to sharing and celebrating different cultures and people. Thank you again.
Mr. Paul Harrell, followed by Carol Krasinikov.
Good evening, I'm Paul Harrell. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Tom, for telling me that I did the referral for Pride and Joy. And I'm glad that they really brought in the customers for all the business. Because, yes, they brought in all the dancers, and they brought all the customers. That's great. That's great hearing now how that worked out over there. That's wonderful. Because it took about a year for to get them over here. So that's wonderful. My main thing is, since I'm at Richmond Drive, and like I brought Mr. Tom about a year ago also, I'm at Richmond Drive in Palm, and I keep hearing car alarms, truck alarms, and everything else. Because since cars parked on Richmond are not on the sidewalk, they're kind of diagonal. And when they come from Laurel down to Palm, people still try and make left turns or right turns on Palm and on Richmond. And they get, like last week, really got pretty close. His truck almost knocked his car out. And I was wondering, since the city is putting these speed bumps and everything else around now, or can we put a sign on Richmond Drive in the center island saying, there's an intersection coming up on Palm? Or we can put a speed control or something to start reducing the cars coming from Laurel side down on Richmond Drive to Palm and stuff? Can the city start thinking about how we can arrange, maybe make it a little bit slower? Let people know that there's an intersection coming up? So there's not an accident about to come up? Because since my apartment faces Palm, I'm right at Richmond Palm, and I hear all the cars from early morning and sometime late at night having issues every now and then. So I'm just wondering if they can get the city or whoever to start looking at that area so we can kind of make it a little bit safer instead? Because sure, there's people also cross the streets and stuff, or the kids and stuff going to Rec Center and the schools and stuff. Anyway, right there. So I don't know how well we can keep it going, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much. Ms. Carol Krasinikov, followed by Albert Yem.
Hello, Carol Krasinikov. I'm speaking in favor, hello, council and mayor, by the way. I'm speaking in favor of the Hanyu Friendship Garden. I think that it's going to be a beautiful addition to the city. And it's already gone through the Sister Cities Committee and the Parks Commission. And I would urge the council to accept it and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Albert Yem, followed by Nianhua Cheng.
Hello, City Council. Thank you. I appreciate the 9/11 remembrance and the proclamation at the beginning of the meeting. It's the perfect day to remind everyone here the spirits of being Americans. We are one nation and one nation only, the United States of America. America is a country of immigrants. Many of us coming from different countries, China, Japan, Brazil, Hong Kong, you name it. The beauty of it is that it doesn't matter where you come from. You become Americans here. And we all embrace each other from different cultures and treat each other with respect and understand the difference. Let's keep our animosity in our community. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Yem. Ms. Nianhua Cheng, followed by Mr. John Cheng.
Well, Mayor and Councilmembers, and my name is Nianhua, and I'm the Millbrae resident. And I'm here today, I want to acknowledge the hard work of Sister City Commission in planning the Hanyu Japanese Friendship Garden. Fully support honoring Millbrae's friendship with Hanyu. But then if this project was funded through private donations or other non-restricted sources, I would have no concern about the plan as a proposed. Since the fund for this garden comes from the city's impact fee fund, and these are not, and these are tax dollars. Okay, these are not tax dollars. But once it's collected, these funds belong to the city and must be spent on public parks and the recreation projects in ways that benefits all residents. So I hope our city management team can wisely plan how to spend the city's impact fee funds. I support the idea of a broader international garden that could still honor Hanyu with cherry trees, excuse me, while also including other trees representing Millbrae residents from various regions. And this approach celebrates the diversity of our community while honoring our friendship with Hanyu, creating a space that unites everyone. I had considered keeping the Hanyu Garden now and using the remaining impact fee funds to create a separate international garden. However, I am concerned that the future impact fee allocations are not guaranteed. You know, a lot of things were changing. So that's why it makes sense to consider an inclusive garden right now.
Thank you so much for your comment. Mr. John Cheng, followed by Judy Louis.
Mayor Fang and Councilmembers, good evening. And I think I have three points to share. The first one is that because I am a Sister City Commissioner, and once, there are a lot of confusion. So I was not aware of that process and also the funding. And after the project submitted to council and a lot of opinion come out, I think that can we change that process and go back again to public instead of from the commission, council, and without the public opinions? And I think at first, if we have a town hall or a public hearing, that will eliminate a lot of misunderstandings. The second one is that some people say impact fee is a private fund. I think the impact, once it's impact fee, according to Google, it says it's a one-time charge levied by local government on new development project to pay for new or expanded public facility and service like road, school, and parks. Okay, so I think the impact fee, suppose we have to consider, it says that we have to consider the infrastructure. And what we need is that parking structure. And so also, I think the park, usually, I think I was in San Francisco employee, and then usually, they think about the infrastructure first, right? Park and rent at the end. So I think we need that.
Thank you, Mr. Cheng. Thank you for your comment. Ms. Judy Louis, followed by Irene.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and all the city councils. My name is Judy, I'm a Millbrae resident. I'm happy to hear that a new garden will be built on Millbrae Avenue. And it's a great news for our community. However, I don't agree with the naming Japanese garden. This name might cause cultural sensitivity issue in Millbrae. Millbrae is a multicultural community. A park with a single cultural theme cannot represent the whole community. It may make other groups feel left out or treated unfairly. I think the name should be mutual and reflects Millbrae as a whole. It should also help people know where the garden located at. I suggest it calling it as Millbrae Garden. And also, the cherry blossom tree in Japanese garden can cause allergy problem. With weak immune system, especially children and seniors, it can lead to symptoms as sneezing, itchy eye, skin rashes, asthma, asthma, and discomfort. This might make some people avoid the park. I hope the City Council will carefully consider a name that is more suitable and inclusive for everyone in Millbrae.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. And then we have Irene, followed by Alice Quall.
Good evening, Mayor and all the councils and all the providers tonight. Did the Millbrae resident get a chance to vote for the name for the garden? That's my question. It just hits back to the history, and I noticed that the world is aware of it. December 1941, what country bombed Pearl Harbor, Hawaii? The question is that due to the attack, there were many young men and young women who lost their lives and lots of other innocent people were killed. So if we name this name Japanese Garden, quote, Millbrae is considered a diverse city. We have all different races in here. Japanese Garden does not represent Millbrae city residents' wish. If the name is used for this garden, it will bring back those terrible memories to all of the Millbrae resident and US citizens. Even, you know, they never admit what they did at fault and never say sorry. This attack is written in the United States history book. So the world is aware of the history. So the suggestion for the name of the garden, as Judy mentioned, Millbrae Garden, that's number one choice. Second choice, Magnolia Garden. The third choice, Millbrae Grand Garden. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Alice Quall, followed by Marion Call. I just wanted to inform the public. I understand two minutes cutting a little short, but you know, if you have further comment, you're always welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
One second.
Oh, oh.
You're always welcome to email the rest of the council for the rest of your comment. Just reassure.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Our mayor and council member, thank you for working hard. I will be so happy to have money to get a new garden. It's so exciting. For me today, even though I emailed all of you already, and I would request and considering polls to our citizen to have a right to vote the name. Because we should know what's going on. We have a right to name the new garden. And another hand, let me correct. I'm also one of the commissioner committee member, too. Based on our all community commissioner agenda, none of them have a right to name Millbrae whatever things. Am I right? Even though the sisters committee does have a right to name the garden's name, or the park and ride committee does have a right in their agenda to name anything. The second, I will ask our mayor, our lawyer, and our manager to clarify one thing in our history. 2019, and Millbrae was considered to the Women's Day for the Comfort Woman Day. At that time, four of the mayor and council members signed the letter, but only one rejected. And because of whatever reason from her own agenda, but since that, I do know Millbrae City had been trying to, listen, please clarify, Tom, trying to build the relationship with Hanyu City from 2014. But whatever reason, they handed, they never signed any conforming for the sister city. So Millbrae City never been a sister city with Hanyu. And in 2019, very important, they terminated the letter of intent with Millbrae, and they just become a sister city. The friendship city just stopped, stop, yes, sorry for that. I'm done.
Please respect the time.
Please.
Yeah, if further.
Clarify that.
Just as I said a moment ago. Hold on, hold on. Just as I said a moment ago, if two minutes is not enough to express your view, you're welcome to email the council for the rest of your comment. Thank you very much. But please, everybody, just respect the time. Ms. Marion Call, followed by Jennifer Zheng, please.
Good evening. Needless to say is, well, somebody said that I say 2014, Hanyu became a friendship city to Millbrae. 2012, we offered a sister city agreement. They held it on for five years, never signed. And then 2019, because of the international woman comfort for World War II, and they canceled the friendship city status with Millbrae. That's my understanding of this. But the thing is, I'm actually very saddened. You know, why are we talking about this? It's nice to have a park. I don't mind it, but I do mind about the name. Why don't we have a park with a name for everybody? And at the last council meeting in July, you approved the project with the name open to be decided by the residents. I remember that. You all can go back to do the playback to watch that council meeting, okay? And then so, I'm just here, I just said, we're so saddened. We whole city, we fought La Quinta together. And then some of us fought something else together. We may even bond the fight for the transit tax together. We don't know. Repel Part 19. But what parliament is, we need to unite together. We need to think about Millbrae first. What is the best, and the councils, I respect you to respect the constituent wishes. I have 400 signature here. They just want the name changed. Continue with your project. And all I want to put on record, whatever I send to you all, you never responded. I only see somebody say, nice to receive an email from you. Done, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Jennifer Zheng, followed by Anne. Ms. Jennifer Jung, followed by Anne Schneider, please.
Good evening, Mayor Fang and council members. I have been hear a lot of people talking about the name of the garden. It's great to have a garden in Millbury, but I really want to express my concern about the proposed name Japanese garden in Millbury's new public garden. While I have deep respect to the Japanese culture and its contributions to our community, and I believe naming a garden after a single ethnicity does not reflect the rich diversity of Millbury. Today, over 50% of the Millbury population identify as Asian. We have Chinese, Filipino, Italian, Vietnamese, Korean, Japanese, and others. Naming the garden just one group may unintentionally leave out all other ethnicities. So Millbury has always stood up for unity, inclusivity, and cultural respect. We have a real opportunity here to choose a name that can bring everybody together. Something like Unity Garden, Cultural Harmonic Garden, or Millbury Heritage Garden, a name that can celebrate and share value of our diversity of community, not just one tradition. So listen to all the residences, I would wish all the council member would do. Let's make sure this garden is a welcoming space for all the residents and reflect the true spirit of Millbury diverse, unit, united, and forward-thinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jung. Anne Schneider, followed by Elaine Puente.
Thank you. Thank you, city council. I'm going to read, at the last council meeting in July, the comment was made by one of the council members that you must listen to the voice of the people, which is true. But there is no single voice in this issue, as you can tell from tonight and from the collections that the other side has been voiding. And I hate to even have another side on this. So let me read this short petition that is also going around. "We support the Hanyu Friendship Garden. We, the undersigned, support the addition of the Hanyu Friendship Garden on a portion of the spur trail and adding to the lovely variety of Millbury parks. The Hanyu Friendship Garden recognizes the city's longstanding relationship with our friends in Japan and joins Mosta Grove, Malta, La Serena Plaza, Chile, the Friendship Olive Tree that was planted simultaneously with Mosta Malta and our friendship city of Ramallah in Palestine at the Millbury Recreation Center. Beautiful new cherry trees will shade the seating area, benches will encourage comfortable relaxation and conversation, and everyone, residents and visitors, will be attracted to enjoy the garden, meanwhile being reminded of our friendship with Millbury and the people of Hanyu, Japan. Funding from the new addition of the park system comes from developer fees, it's not a tax, and will now provide new recreational opportunities for our residents and our visitors. This has been a process going on for two and a half years. As someone who's been to Hanyu twice and sitting where you are, I reported out on each activity on this. It was reported out at Parks and Rec, it was reported out at Sister Cities. We have a process that we follow. If one group, and I feel for the pain that you feel from World War II. My family came to this country because the Germans sunk our family fishing boat. We all have pain in our past. We all live in pain from past wars. Sister Cities is to live in friendship. It is your choice to keep us moving in that direction."
Thank you for your comment. Please respect the time. Elaine Puente, please.
Hi, hello, Mayor and city council. My name is Elaine Puente. Actually, I prepared my speech for three minutes, but I didn't notice, only two minutes, so I'm gonna cut it short. So my name is Elaine Puente. I am here to speak out for parents, dog parents, because we have a dog, but we don't have a place to go. So recently, that my friend and I, we got a citation ticket at the Millbury Central Park, and we think it's really not fair, because you gave us ticket, but we have no place for our dog to play. So I think it's time for us to have a dog park, Millbury, definitely, because we have zero. So either I have to take my dog on the street, walk on the street, or I have to drive to other city. So I'm hoping that soon, we're gonna have a dog park, and I would like to have a exclusive dog park, meaning it's no kids playground, because we already have that in every park. So please, hear our voice, and so hopefully, we will have a dog park here in Millbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puente. I have one more here from Catherine Quip, but I'm going to take the online speaker first, and then we'll come back to you. City clerk, would you please call the online speaker?
Certainly, Mayor. The first speaker is Sunny Al Yeng. Please accept the mute.
Hello?
Go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening, council members. My name is Sunny, and I live on Millbury Avenue. I want to raise a concern about the trees along Millbury Avenue near the baseball field and on the spur trail at Josephine World Park. These trees have grown very tall and dense. In the three years I lived in Millbury, I have already seen large branches fall from those trees along Millbury Avenue. Luckily, no one was injured, but it could have been serious. I have also seen this happen in Burningame on Alcomino Real. Also, every storm brings branches crashing down. From my 30th year in San Francisco, I know the risk when trees are not maintaining, they fall during storm, and they also feel wildfires. If a wildfires were to happen here, it would not only endanger life, but also put us at risk of losing fire insurance or facing higher cost, just like some of our neighboring cities. I respectfully urge the city to act now by peeling and managing these trees before storm or fires put our community in danger. I'm also supporting Hanyu Garden project, since all the parties have given their hard work and effort to get it designed and approved from the city. Looking forward for this wonderful addition in Millbury. Thank you and good night.
All right, the next speaker is X. X, please go ahead and state your full name for the record. Thank you.
Grace Forham. This weekend, I had the opportunity to watch the documentary, The Killing of Michael Brown. In it, Shelby Steele said that America's original sin is the use of race as a means to power. He explained that race is never an end in itself, only a means, and that it's the use of human affairs is always corruption. That reminded me of the incident where a councilman was hit on the head with a block of cement and claimed that it was racially motivated attack. There were at least 14 news reports and multiple interviews in which it was claimed that the attackers made racist hand gesture, but I personally confirmed that the gesture was simply the metal finger. Offensive, yes, but not racist. When leaders invent racial motives, they trivialize real victims of hate crimes. As Steele warned, "When the lies become the truth and the truth becomes the lie, race is used as a weapon for power instead of justice." That kind of behavior only feeds division and paves the way for more racism, like the hostility I've seen growing around the proposed Japanese Friendship Garden. I don't recall this kind of opposition when Mr. Grove was proposed, and my family's from Massaso, I think I'd remember it. And Anne Schneider even commented about, you know, the other, the Chilean garden and other trees. There was never this opposition. This opposition comes from a small vocal group that's blaming people for what a government did before they were born, and that's not right. So I urge you, please approve the Japanese Friendship Garden and send a clear message that racism and race-baiting will not be tolerated in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe. Joe, please state your full name for the record.
This is Joe Cherisi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm calling in this evening to speak out in favor of the Hanyu Friendship Garden. I respect all the time and energy that was put in to plan this and organize it and put the whole thing together, as well as the work of the Sister Cities Commission and the Park and Recs, and the Parks and Rec Commission. I think that this project has been well-vetted and there's been plenty of opportunity for public input, and I think it would be wrong and would undermine your advisory committees if you ignored that input and that process and their recommendation that the project be approved. I also think it's perfectly appropriate to have a space to honor one of our friendship cities. It's very similar, as has been mentioned, to the Mosta Grove and the La Serena Plaza. It's a wonderful way to honor the friendship between us and Hanyu, Japan, and I think it should move forward expeditiously. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Kenneth Smith. Please accept the mute.
Hi, this is Ken Smith, and I sent a letter to the council members in the fact that I support the Japanese garden, and for there many reasons why I support it. But we're a nation of forgiving, and we are, I think, as some of the speakers said, that we are all Americans in one country, and we need to be able to live together. The Japanese gardens are famous throughout the United States. They're a beautiful sanctuary space for people to reflect and clear their minds. I support the Japanese garden 100%. It went through all the proper procedures, it went through all the proper steps, through all the different committees, commissions, and council. So to come at the last second to try to stop it would not be appropriate. If we don't call it a Japanese garden and we change the name, I think people would be okay with it, but it has to stay in the flavor of a Japanese garden and has to be Sister City with Hanyu, for sure, if we put a plaque there or whatever the case may be. But we cannot, we cannot go backwards just because someone doesn't like it. Again, this process has been vetted through the proper process, and I appreciate that when this comes up to agendatize, that the council will hear all the positives for the Japanese garden. Thank you very much.
The last online speaker is John Kiefer. John Kiefer, please accept the mute.
We'll come back to him. So can we have Catherine Quig, and then we'll come back to John.
Mayor Fang, council people, city manager. My name is Catherine Quig, and I am going to speak about the garden also. A lot has been said about the Hanyu Friendship Garden this evening, and why we should not name it the Hanyu Friendship Garden. However, it is simple. We should remember that it is established as a sister city garden at Mosta Grove, La Serena Plaza, the Olive Tree for Ramallah. This is not about one country or another country, and its wars and its conflicts. This is to represent cities working together for a better world. It sets us aside as a welcoming city for all people. It is a good example to other Bay Area cities. There are sister cities and friendship cities all over the world. This is not, and it should not be, political. It is not about wars and conflicts from over 70 years ago. It is not about apologies that were not made. Please, let's move forward from our mistakes that were made many, many, many years ago. This park is about welcoming and forgiving people we are today. The funding is in place, so please, please stay on course and move forward with the Sister City Approval Work Plan, the Park and Recreation Committee Approved Plan. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Mr. Kiefer, is he still available?
I could go ahead and try it one more time.
Hello?
Okay, here we go. Mr. Kiefer?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fang and the city council. My name is John Kiefer, and I am commenting as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission and supporter of the proposed Japanese Friendship Garden project. Like many others in our community, I value the opportunity to create a peaceful, culturally enriching space that benefits residents of all ages and backgrounds, and celebrates a 20-year relationship with Hanyu. This project has gone through the proper channels, received unanimous support from the Parks and Recreation Commission. It reflects a collaborative, politically agnostic process grounded in public input, expert review, and careful planning. It's concerning that one commissioner, after voting in favor of this project in our commission, is now appearing before the city council in opposition. This sudden reversal raises questions about transparency and consistency in representation. If a conflict of interest exists, financial, personal, or otherwise, it should have been disclosed, and the commissioner should have recused herself. As public servants, commissioners have a duty to uphold the integrity of the process and follow through on informed decisions made on behalf of the community. I urge the city council to honor the unanimous decision made by the Parks and Recreation Commission and to move forward with this culturally and environmentally meaningful project brought forward by the Sister Cities Commission. Let's not allow personal reversals or possible conflicts to derail what is clearly a well-supported vision for our entire community. And let's remember, multicultural does include Japanese, but I think that's kind of irrelevant when we are only talking about a name for a park. Thank you for your time and commitment to all of our city.
That's it for the speaker this evening. All right, so that brings the end to the public communication this evening. I want to thank all the speaker who has been as passionate as they are about speaking on this issue, and we will make sure that we bring it back at some point for a discussion. Perhaps city manager, is there any update on, you know, that proposed Spirit Trail improvement?
You know, Ms. Ray, because this is a public comment, it's not on the agenda.
We're not here to discuss their particular comment, but just a little update on where things are on that little Spirit Trail improvement there.
So at the direction of the city council at the last meeting, we're moving forward with further design of the garden, and we will be bringing that to the city council as it continues to evolve.
Okay, very well. And I think many of the parks of the past, you know, Milton State Park is currently engaging in a very robust community outreach program, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
And then there's a couple other parks that we've done in the past, Marina Vista, and, you know, they're all, you know, have very robust community outreach program and surveys, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I think it, you know, at some point might actually be beneficial for us to look at how we can get the community involved.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't think there can be any decision or discussion, so we can agendize it in the future, but I just want to make sure the council doesn't step out, yeah, exposed to something that's not on the agenda.
Very well, all right.
But I do, we get the message.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just a matter of making sure everybody has a voice. All right, so moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or desir to issue purchase orders to suppliers selected by the Bay Area Chemical Consortium up to a total amount of $350,000 for fiscal year 2025 to '26 and the fiscal year '26 to '27, and also consider the appointment to the Youth Advisory Committee. Anyone want to pull any item from this consent calendar? Any public comment on item number five and number six? Okay, seeing none, anybody want to make? Okay, seeing none, anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Vice Mayor Holliver. Your votes, please.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much, and we don't have any public hearing this evening. Moving on to existing business, I'm under item number seven, adoption of a resolution approving an amendment increasing the construction contract by an amount of $702,300 from $1,687,392.50 to $2,389,692.50 for extra work on Landing Lane and San El Salmo Avenue under the 2024 Marina Vista Sewer Replacement and Pavement Rehabilitation Project, increasing the task order with park engineering for construction management and inspection services by $20,000 from $196,740 to $216,740, increasing the project contingency by $75,830.50 from $282,620 to $358,450.50, establishing a project budget of $2,964,883, and authorizing the city manager or his desirie to execute contracts amendment for the extra work up to the project budget. City manager, would you please?
A mouthful, Mr. Mayor. All right, I would like to introduce our city engineer, Mr. Amad Haye, for the staff presentation.
One small suggestion, can we work with round numbers in the future?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Amad Haye, city engineer and CIP manager, here to, uh, discuss a contract amendment for the Marina Vista Sewer Replacement and Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Next slide. Uh, this, Marina Vista Sewer Repaving and Rehabilitation Project, uh, was approved by council, construction contract was approved by council by, on November 12th, 2024. Um, and, uh, the, as the name implies, the primary scope of work was sewer replacement and pavement restoration, uh, in the Marina Vista neighborhood. Um, the work also include concrete work, uh, such as driveways, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and the installation of new ADA ramps. Uh, the work include was primarily in the Landing Lane, San El Salmo and Burien Court area, but there was a small scope of work in the Millbury Circle. That's the project background. Uh, let me give you, next slide, please. Some of the work that has been completed so far, we've installed sewers, um, as you can see on the left side, sewer line that's installed underneath the water main. Uh, there's new sewer manholes, already been trenching, um, of the open trench, new asphalt on San El Salmo. Next slide, please. During the course of construction, uh, it was noted that there was, um, submarginal conditions, uh, with some ponding of water, as you can see in the pictures on the right, uh, in the Landing Lane neighborhood, the, the water backs up and, and stays on the surface, so, uh, it fills up the curbs and gutters, the driveway aprons, and it doesn't get all the way into them. Uh, additionally, residents were reporting that they were seeing constant ponding, uh, during moderate to heavy rains. Um, this has, flooding has been in this neighborhood for many years, uh, it's been actually many decades, uh, due to the design of subdivision, the low elevation and topography of this neighborhood, as well as SFO's deferred maintenance of Lumina Canal for many years. Uh, on the side, SFO has, has improved the maintenance of the Lumina Canal, but historically that has contributed to flooding in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. As you can see in the picture on the right, uh, there are noted cracks, uh, as well as gaps and some offsets on the sidewalks and the curb and gutter, uh, there, the efficiencies reduce the speed that stormwater gets to the inlet, uh, and which can worsen the flooding in the neighborhood. Water also can get into the, beneath the pavement, uh, through these cracks and the, and the gaps between the asphalt and the curb and gutter, uh, which further undermines the pavement and the curb and gutter. Additionally, the, the, the water that's retained at the surface, uh, makes its way into the sanitary sewer collection systems and contributes to inflow infiltration into sanitary sewer system. Uh, if you recall, there was, um, Millbury was under a consent decree over about a decade ago, and we had to address a specific problem that was noted about inflow infiltration. As you can see in the picture on the right, uh, concrete work, uh, usually goes hand in hand with pavement, uh, this, this specific example is in another location where there's a little more slope, but, uh, the concrete was installed, and then additional pavement is usually, uh, removed as a result of this. So you install the concrete first, and then, uh, pavement gets installed. Um, and in this certain circumstance right now, we have pavement not installed, and we've commenced with some, some work underground as well as some surface improvements, but we'd like to address the additional deficiencies with the concrete. We have worked with the contractor to, uh, get a, the additional scope of work priced, and we have a price of $702,000, which is consistent and similar to the, the already existing scope of work, uh, as part of this project, so we find this cost reasonable. Um, the contractor is ready and able to do this work this year, and so, uh, we believe that's appropriate to move ahead, as well as the fact that we have funding in the Sewer Enterprise Fund for additional scope of work. Please. Benefits of doing this work right now is to reduce the ponding and nuisance water that's observed, uh, that's in, in this neighborhood. It also further include, uh, will increase the service life of the pavement in the Landing Lane and San El Salmo neighborhood, uh, Avenue. Uh, we also expect reduce, uh, operational costs over 20-year life of the pavement. Um, as mentioned earlier, there's a reduction in inflow infiltration, which incidentally will also mean less cost as there's less flows to the wastewater treatment plant or processing. And as mentioned earlier, uh, there's additional aesthetics, uh, if you go back to the previous picture, there's pavement work, you want to have a consistent work, you don't want to do just concrete work, and then you have to come back and do some additional pavement. Doing this now will give a more aesthetic and uniform project, uh, and appearance. Next slide, please. Therefore, staff recommends approving the amendment, increasing the construction contract, uh, by $702,300 for a total of $2,389,692. And, uh, and we also recommend increasing the task order with park engineering, which is our consultant for construction management inspection services by $20,000 to $206,580. We recommend increasing the project contingency just due to the additional scope of work, uh, by $75,830 for a total of $358,450. Altogether, the project total would be $2,964,883, so we recommend increasing the project budget, and we recommend authorizing the center, the city manager or their desirie to execute a contract amendment for the extra work, the project budget. Please. If council approves this additional contract amendment, we, staff would, will proceed to execute a contract change order with the contractor. Uh, the contract work can begin as early as October, they expect to mobilize their crews back again, and the work is expected to be two, take about two months. Um, and then the asphalt pavement is dependent on weather and rain conditions, so this would be right in the middle of rain season, so it may not be the appropriate time to install new pavement, and asphalt patch plants are actually shut down during the rainy season. You may have to come back during the spring to finish even work. That, I'll, I'll, next slide, please. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Anyone on this council have any questions for Amad? Councilmember Riley?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I think, uh, thank you. I think your Landing Lane decision is going to be so appreciated. You just mentioned you're going to come back next year to finish it, right?
Yeah, we, we have to do, complete the concrete work. Um, we'll work with the contractor, see as much as we can, but there may be some work that has to be, uh, when the conditions are appropriate, and we do want to make sure this lasts, and the temperature and weather does not cause deteriorous effects of the asphalt pavement that's laid down. You have to have the right temperature and, and weather conditions to install that.
I see. Then, before the real incident, what kind of construction will get it, is it done?
We, we want to address the concrete and the driveways to make sure the, and installation of the inlet so that we can help improve with the, uh, the stormwater impacts over the rainy season.
Good, thank you so much.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for this, it seems like this, um, is a project that makes sense. Just a question in terms of how this was discovered, I guess when this project was first designed, was it just sort of not noticed that the asphalt was in, and the curbs were in bad shape?
It, it was intended to fill the asphalt, but it was, uh, during some, some parts of the curbs and gutters were removed, and that, and we noticed that it does not flow correctly, even after it was installation, so there were some observations of the new improvements not sliding, so we had actually our design team come back and look at it and see if you had to do it right, how would you slope everything out? It is a very flat neighborhood, so it's very minimal differences can cause, uh, the water to back up or some, some, not, not to flow correctly, so that's one of the things that we've noticed, and we wanted to come back and do it correctly.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Rinaldi, followed by Councilmember Nguyen.
Thanks, Mayor Feng. Quick question for engineering, uh, regarding these curbs, is it going to be ADA compliant as part of what you're doing? Does it fall underneath that scope of the project?
There, yes, they're ADA compliant scope of work. Uh, most of those items have been addressed in the ramps and, and, but most of this new scope of work is for drainage, to address drainage, and so there are ADA ramps that need to be adjusted, we will be making those adjustments at those locations.
So this project itself won't include any ADA compliant ramps because those ramps and that already are already part of an existing project, is that correct?
Correct, I, I was just maybe, maybe misstated. There's already ADA, new ADA ramps that are included as part of the scope, so there's, some of them have already been installed. Uh, so I, I just want to make that really, I, I think I may not emphasize this, but ADA is included as part of asphalt work, and so in general, we do ADA, address ADA ramps and accessibility. Uh, questions?
Thank you for the clarification. So it's already included in the original scope of work, this scope of work is merely to work on the curbs for better drainage over on Landing Lane in that area, correct?
Yes.
Couldn't be more happier with it, I know that area in particular suffers from a lot of flooding, so I think it's a great project.
Councilmember Nguyen?
$700,000 roughly, sounds like a significant increase, right, compared to the original price tag. I'm, I'm just curious, if you can walk me through the, uh, process on change orders, because I would imagine project management, uh, that's been figured out early in, in the planning, right, anticipating these types of, uh, major cost increases, like why, I'm just, just want to know, like, why wasn't it, like, originally planned in terms of pricing?
Yeah, so as, as started earlier, um, stated earlier, it was primarily meant to address the sewer, the underground surface, and as the open trench, we would do new pavement so that we wouldn't have a, a new, like a trench right in the middle of a new street or an existing street, so the intention was to do those, address that. There was, uh, some paving, I'm not paving, some concrete work that was included, uh, and so after realizing and doing some of it, they tried to keep it within the existing project limits, but recognizing that we were hitting the budget limits, and we had addressed the Landing Lane and San El Salmo streets, a lot more needed to be done. We actually had our design team come back and take a look at it, say, how, how would you do this, if you had to do this right? It is very flat, there's very little tolerance, I imagine, for doing that. To answer your question about change orders, we did work with the contractor, we were doing piece by piece, adjusting the contract quantities, increasing it up to the budget limit, recognizing that we were, we were up to a limit on how much we can do, and that would still not solve all the drainage issues. We would get up to one driveway, and the next driver would not have it. That's basically, you may even see that right now, some of the drivers have been done, we were basically at the project limits in terms of the cost. I think it's to, to do the rest of it and do it right, we need additional money, and using the contract quantities, this is about where we were estimating it, about $700,000, $750, contract quantities, and this is reasonable based on other projects that we've done as well.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may add on to that, though, th- this is not a change order project. Um, change orders are usually contingencies, right, that are unforeseen, th- this is actually new work and, and, and significant additional work, um, that were found during construction to overcome, you know, as was mentioned, you know, the additional, uh, flooding and ponding, um, that, that, um, during construction was, was found to occur, so this goes above and beyond the change order, this is an amendment, uh, for additional work.
I see, new scope, it sounds like.
New scope, exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully that helps.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thanks, Mayor Feng, last set of questions, or last comment from me and question. Uh, I completely understand, hearing from a lot of residents, how infrastructure and repaving of roads is very important of them. Uh, being that, I'm in full support of this project, I do have a question for our finance director to understand that coming, we're coming towards the end of the year, got a couple months left, and I'd like to understand the budget of what's remaining in there. I know the $700,000 from previous conversations about budget, we can cover that, but just to have an idea of where exactly we stand would be helpful.
All right, uh, thank you, Councilmember Rinaldi. We're currently, um, closing the books right now, so we're actually reviewing, um, all of the invoices that are coming in. Um, currently, as it stands right now, we're, um, within the, um, budgeted limits, but we still have a few more, um, invoices to, um, review, so that's currently where we're actually at right now. We have reviewed a lot of it, uh, there's a few more, um, that are outstanding, we're very close to closing the books. It should be done relatively soon within the next couple of weeks.
Maybe, maybe you can help here a little bit. So we're in a fiscal year, so it goes from July 1st to June 30th, so we just started the new fiscal year, so we're only, um, you know, two months into the new budget year, and so this project is a combination of last fiscal year as well as this fiscal year. So we can get you, I mean, our, our, our sewer fund is healthy, um, continues to be healthy, we have a lot of work to do, infrastructure work, I think, as you know, but we can, we can bring that back to you and let you know, uh, what the remain, I mean, it's millions of dollars that we have remaining, but also with the capital improvement project that was approved, you know, those funds are allocated, you know, based on the amount of revenue that we see every year, but it's also multiple year projects that we have on our horizon, and this is one of those multiple year projects that, that go across fiscal years, so it's cumulative, if, if that, if that helps.
I think the additional commentary is very, very helpful, and if we can take this offline with city staff to get back to me on that, I think it'd be very appreciative, I'd be very appreciative of it. I know we closed out the last fiscal session, uh, healthy, which, speaking with the mayor offline, uh, many times, you know, it's great to be a city where we're having, uh, a lot of development going on and we're managing our budgets very well, but I would like to understand the capital improvement project plan and where we stand as far as the money that's being allocated to the project. Thank you. Certainly.
Anyone else? Okay, let's take some public comment on this item.
Mayor, we do not have any speakers slip or, um, hands raised online.
Okay, nobody want to speak on a $2 million project? Okay. Right, sounds good. Um, bring it back to the council, any other further comments, otherwise I can entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Nguyen, a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. Any final comments? Your votes, please.
Item number seven, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, Amad. And another item is new business, adoption of a resolution requesting the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to allocate the fiscal year 2025 to '26 Transportation Development Article, uh, Act, Article III Pedestrian Bicycle Project Funding. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to introduce our city engineer, Mr. Amad Haye, for this staff presentation.
So I hope this is, uh, relatively good news, uh, in regards to a funding opportunity on a grant reallocation for the Murchison Drive pedestrian bicycle improvements. Next slide, please. City Burlingame was, uh, is currently designing bicycle lane improvements on Merchant Drive as part of the Murchison, Truesdale, and Davis Drive bicycle improvement projects. Uh, the City Burlingame was awarded Transportation Development Act Article III funding, known as PDA III, for this project, uh, $400,000 in 2022. Uh, the, this is a joint project with Burlingame leading the design efforts. Uh, they have shared preliminary plans and conceptual plans with staff as well as, uh, presentation to Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Uh, the, the exhibit below here is a conceptual plan of how Murchison Drive would look like, um, in the future, with, right now is the preferred alternative is to have the parking lanes right, and the, uh, Bufford Bike Lane in the middle and then Travel Lane in the middle. Um, the, the important part to note about Murchison Drive is that the center line is the jurisdictional boundary, uh, between Burlingame and Millbury in this, within this project area. Next slide, please. So the project scope is, uh, from, from Sequoia Avenue, uh, you see it on the left screen, uh, on the screen is on the left side, going all the way to Al Camino and a little bit on to beyond Al Camino Real to California. Uh, twice, there's class two bicycle lanes as well as class four bicycle lanes or Bufford Bike Lanes, um, and then, um, pedestrians crossing improvements, uh, for the safety for ads. It's important to note, there's two, two high schools in this area, Mills High School and Spring Valley Elementary School. Next slide. So the, the funding is regional funding from Metropolitan Transportation Commission, uh, MTC, uh, within San Mateo County. Within San Mateo County, the City and County Association of Governments administers the grants, CCAG, also known as CCAG. When Burlingame decided to move Truesdale Drive as part of the project, CCAG moved $100,000 from their award. So we became aware, City, Millbrae staff became aware and as well as members in the community, and we requested the reallocation of the funding to keep the project, the project funding on the project and to help City Millbrae with their portion on Murchison Drive. This request has been, already been reviewed by CCAG's Technical Advising Commission and they recommended approval on June 26, 2025. They, the CCAG's bicycle, they have their own bicycle pedestrian advisory commission and they've also reviewed this and they also gave positive recommendation on July 24, 2025. So as part of TDA III regulations, we need a resolution, which is part of this package right now before you, to submit a grant real, reallocation. So with the next slide please. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution requesting the Metropolitan Transportation Commission allocate fiscal year 2025, 26 Transportation Development Act III Pedestrian and Bicycle Project Funding. Next steps after we, with this resolution, we can go to CCAG and CCAG will review it and take it to their board in October for review and approval. They in turn will then recommend it, approve it, recommend approval to MTC. They estimate, we haven't talked with them, but they estimate that MTC will do it either end of the year or early part of 2025. The goal is basically to have this project completed by the end of 2026, so construction has to be complete by then. So right now, the design is expected to be, project is expected to be completed in spring of 2026. Right now, we're working with City of Burlingame on a MOU. We're drafting that and we will bring that to council in a few months. That's the next step. That, answering your questions.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Anyone on the council, any questions for our project manager here? Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thanks Mayor Fung. Can we just have a real quick recap of what the next steps are? From my understanding, needs a vote over on our council, to then send it back to CCAG, for CCAG to vote on it, to then make the recommendation, MTC to fund it. So that CCAG meeting, is that coming up, was it September 11th?
It was intended to be September 11th, they deferred it until October right now. So that's the, it was originally, you're correct, it was supposed to be September 11th. Right now, we heard from staff, it's scheduled for October.
So it's been delayed by one month. Perfect. And then just for council, just a quick recap, this project came about as the result of a grant that was given to Burlingame, our neighboring city, a grant for Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to add safe lanes for bicyclists. And one of the routes happened to be on Truesdale, which Burlingame opted not to do, which included a safe routes to school for two schools. So being that they couldn't fulfill this safe route to school obligation that they'd committed to, CCAG came to Millbrae, who was a very, very close second place in that grant funding, and asked us if we had any projects that could fit the bill for safe routes to school. So hence the reason why this project came about, which would bring a safe route to school over to Spring Valley and Mills, and it's right on the border of Burlingame. Half that side of the street is Burlingame, the other half is Millbrae. So working with Burlingame to fulfill the requirement of a safe route to school, so I strongly encourage my colleagues to agree to move this project forward.
Any other comment? Councilmember Nguyen.
Comment and a question. So one comment is, I did talk to people in District Five, it's not District Four, District Five, complaining about potential traffic that may occur from adding these, has that been considered as part of this plan?
Yeah, there is, as part of the process, they would evaluate that right now. Murchison does not expect to have any traffic, well, some of the comments were about parking, but there's no change in parking within Murchison on this.
Okay.
With alternative options picked.
It'd be great to get some information, more additional information on that. And then two is the, I know it's in progress, but the MOU between Burlingame and Millbrae, can you share any details, preliminary details?
It's basically, not the cost is not finalized because we're still on preliminary design, but basically after the grant contributions, it'll be split equally. That's the, some of the terms, but the actual dollar amount has not been settled.
How about infrastructure management or, you know, like any setup like for the construction? I'm just curious if that's part of the MOU.
Yes, so we intend to have Burlingame advertise this altogether as one project, be more cost effective, not just do one, their half the street, but do both sides so it's more uniform. They would do the project management, construction management, that'll be part of the project as well. But then ultimately, long term, it would be discussed, but it's ultimately each side would maintain their own.
I see, but we'd be voting for that too?
Eventually, yeah, we'll come back to it.
Got it, thanks.
Okay. Any comments on the side of it? Okay, so if you can bring back the map where you have to propose improvement on Murchison? Yeah, one more, where to show the, there you go, that's the one. That's from Sequoia all the way to the track. You know, obviously, Murchison is a sort of a main artery going, you know, from east to west, and I think different sections of Murchison has different width. It's my understanding that it's a little wider, you know, from Ogden, there you go. Anything east of Ogden tends to be a little wider, have a little bit more space to, you know, put together these bike lane where the, you know, portion between Sequoia and Ogden, which is in front of Mills High School, tend to be a little bit narrower. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what the design is going to look like and how can the community be a part of that process? As, it's my understanding that you said a moment ago, Burlingame is going to lead the design of this bike lane, protected bike lane, which is certainly a great addition and not to mention the fact that we get funding for it, which is even better. So, but how can the community be part of that as we move forward with this design?
Mayor, I can take that. So if we can go to Ava, the previous slide with the cross section. And Mayor, you bring up a good point, I think also Councilmember Nguyen as well. So this is a cross section, preliminary design at the wide point, out in front of, you know, the old Lucky Albertson store.
Even before that, I think it might be, right, the California Teacher Association Building.
Correct. And so this looking eastbound CTA building would be on the right, the condominium complex in Millbrae would be on the left. It's very wide, I think, as you all know. And then at Ogden, as you pointed out, as you're going west, it narrows. And so we will, at the direction of the city council, we can include a community engagement meeting, community workshop, get their feedback, get information, address their concerns. This was, there were several different design concepts, both City of Millbrae, City of Burlingame, traffic engineering, engineering staff, city managers agreed on this design rather than the Calif, I think you're familiar with the California Drive design that had a bike lane where the white vehicles are parked on the curb, and where the bike lane is on this is actually the parking and then the travel lane. We believe this is much, much safer for bicyclists as well as parking. You can't see it, but on the bottom of this, and Ahmad could read you what the dimensions are if you can't read them, but one of the concerns, you know, for bicyclists in this design is car doors opening, and so there's enough width to allow safety when car doors open, so bicycles are not involved in a hazardous situation. So there's plenty of room, that center line that you see, the double yellow lines, there's plenty of room to actually, if we need more room, parking lanes, bicycle lanes, travel lanes, to move that in as well. And then, it's not shown here, but when you get west of Ogden, it's actually sharrows that's similar to how we have designed on Magnolia where it's the green paint with the bicycle and the bicycle shares the roadway with the vehicle. But, you know, to the council's direction, we will certainly have advertising community meeting, get input, brief the community, and see what they have to say.
Just have a chance for people to get to see the design and be able to be a part of the process, so. But it's, you know, it's good to know that, you know, somehow we'll be to find funding for this improvement. It's always nice to have an alternate way to, you know, get to and from the west side of the station, so. Your further comments?
Yeah, just one other quick comment here. So these plans and the project itself passed through the Regional Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I think it's important to note that. Also, the project, the way it was presented is it's not going to be taking away parking spots and will have very minimal impact on Murchison, whereas it was originally proposed on, proposed to be on Truesdale. And it's worth noting that Burlingame's engineering team had made the comment that if it were to be on Truesdale, it would turn the service level of that road from a C to an F. Keep in mind, Truesdale has a regional hospital on there, so that would have been a detriment to everyone around the region, have that service level drop from a C to F. So just want to add that little tidbit of information for everyone.
Okay, all right, very well. Let's take some public comment on this item. Anyone?
We do have any public comment on this item there.
Okay, very well. Bring it back to the council. What's your pleasure? Motion to approve. Councilmember Rinaldi and also a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Final comments? Okay, your votes please.
The item number eight passed by a vote of five zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, receive informational report and update on unidirectional water main flushing program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our interim city engineer, our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Harry Burrows for the staff presentation. We also have Mr. Leonard Harkness in the back, he's our supervisor in our water department, who's here this evening.
Director Burrow.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. So the question is, what is unidirectional water line flushing? Near and dear to many of you, next slide please. So what unidirectional water main flushing is, it's a system to clean water pipes by flushing high velocity water through them. The purpose or the goal is to remove sediments, deposits, and other impurities that sometimes show up as either brown water, impurities, odors, sometimes off color tasting water, off tasting water, maybe a little rusty or minerally water. So UDF is different than traditional testing or flushing. It focuses water at a high velocity and a high volume through the water line pipes. Individual sections are isolated and instead of flushing system wide, it focuses on these individual sections to help clean them. And to illustrate this, I wanted to share with you, next slide please, a little video that the city of Tygar, Oregon put together that really explains this process. Again, we're borrowing it from another city, but the goal is in the future, we would have a similar video with our own crews, Len and his guys out there that would explain this. But I think this is a good overview for you and the public to hear, and then I'll provide some more detail after the video.
Unidirectional flushing, also known as UDF, is the process the city of Tygar uses to keep its water mains clean. Periodic unidirectional flushing eliminates sediment and minerals that may have accumulated in city water mains. Tygar residents may see public works crews setting up signs on neighborhood streets to indicate flushing is taking place in the area. Performing unidirectional flushing results in clean, clear water delivered to your tap. Most water providers use some form of flushing, which usually involves opening a hydrant and letting the water flow for an extended period of time. This is not the most efficient process since the water moves at a low velocity in the water mains. Tygar Public Works uses unidirectional flushing because it uses less water than other flushing methods and is more effective. Unidirectional flushing involves closing valves and opening hydrants to create a single direction of flow. This process scours water mains, removing silt and other mineral deposits that may have accumulated over time. The process is simple. The underground valves are closed or opened in an engineered sequence. Hydrants are also inspected to see they are in good working order. This inspection is important to ensure hydrants are functional during firefighting emergencies. The hydrant valve is open to release the water. Crews ensure water velocity in the main is high enough for them to be cleaned effectively. Treated tap water in our mains contains a small amount of chlorine, a disinfectant that kills harmful organisms. We want to prevent the chlorine from entering the stormwater system as it can harm fish and wildlife. A chlorine diffuser is attached and a neutralizing tablet is added to offset the effects of chlorine as it leaves the hydrant. Water discharge from the diffuser is tested to ensure it is free from chlorine. Crews test the water for turbidity. Turbidity is the cloudiness in water caused by suspended particles. Crews make sure standards for water turbidity are met before flushing is completed. The final result is extremely clear water for our customers. Residential customers may be temporarily inconvenienced by cloudy water or low pressure in the area. However, your water will not be turned off and you will continue to receive water service to your home. It is important to note, your water bill will not be affected by our crews flushing to improve water quality. The water being flushed comes directly from the distribution system and does not pass through your water meter. You are only charged for water that flows through the meter on your property.
So again, I think that video is very informative. It's a system that we use here. I think Len can confirm that pretty much everything that was said in that video, we do here in Millbrae as well. What this slide represents is just a comparison of conventional flushing versus unidirectional flushing. Historically, before unidirectional flushing was used, the way that water lines would be flushed, would you just open up a fire hydrant and let the water flow out? But as you can see on the drawing on the left, there's a lot of different pipes that head into that hydrant without closing off valves, so the water goes in at a lower flow rate and a lower velocity, so it doesn't do as good a job of cleaning out the pipes. What's shown on the right hand side is illustration where we close off valves, isolate these specific sections, we call them reaches, and the velocities and the flows are two to three times faster and more than conventional flushing. So it really improves the cleaning, uses less water. Downside is, it does require more manpower and a lot more planning. Len and his guys spend a lot of time putting together these UDF plans where they look at certain sections of the city, what sections or reaches should they be flushing? And it's a very, like I said, thoughtful process and a sequential process. Next slide please. Again, it's a strategic process, like I said, a lot of planning, it isolates the sections, the high velocity, and it uses up to 40% less water than conventional flushing. Next slide. So the benefits are improved water quality. We're trying to, you know, get the complaints that we have from some residents of either brown water or off taste or odors or sediments in the lines. A lot of our infrastructure in the city, as we know, is older, and we got a lot of cast iron pipes. They tend to have corrosion and other sediments that settle in them more easily than some of the newer plastic pipes. UDF, by forcing this water through these pipes, we can remove a lot of that corrosion and help restore the capacity of the water lines themselves. The other advantage is, the crews go out and they open and close the valves in the fire hydrants. What that does, for lack of a better way of describing it, it exercises those valves. Valves and hydrants can, just like the water lines, corrode over time if they're not open and closed, so this helps keeping them, keep them functioning properly. The other thing that it does is by doing this, our crews obviously are out there hands on with all the individual pieces of the infrastructure out there, so it helps with our asset management. If anything that is not operating properly, we can identify it now and replace it or identify it for replacement as opposed to waiting until something bad happens. Next slide. So this is an actual photo from a couple weeks ago of one of the hydrants that was open. This is the initial flushing, so you can see, this is an older reach of pipe that cast iron, a lot of what you're seeing here, this brown or rusty colored water, is we first open that valve, it forces that stuff out, and so we're cleaning this section of pipe. And you can see, these water lines can accumulate a lot of sediment and other corrosion and other, next slide please. And so again, this is an actual photo from the field after this section of water line has been flushed. Like they said in the video, we test for turbidity. That's the amount of suspended solids that are in the water, to make sure that it's been fully flush. been fully flushed. And then once the water is flowing out, and you can see clean and pristine, that's what we want to be delivering to our customers. And so that's the purpose of this program. Next slide. So the, um, area of the city that we're currently focusing on is what's, um, we have identified here is zone four. There's four pressure zones within the city's, um, water system. Zones one through three are in the higher elevation of the hills. Zone four is mostly the flat area of the city. It's where, or flatter area of the city. It's where, um, you can see geographically, at least 50% or more of the water lines are located. It's also because it's a flatter area, it tends to accumulate more of the sediments, as well as there's probably a predominant, predominance of the older pipes in this area, the cast iron pipes that, um, do experience the corrosion. So zone four, um, flushing is going to take about two months or so. We're currently, um, about a third of the way through it. So we're hoping to be completed by about mid-October. And as I said earlier, um, Leonard and his guys, their plan shows 192 individual reaches. So there's a 192 separate operations that they go out and do, um, while they're flushing this. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we just, um, put up on the website, because there has been some interest from the public, um, an FAQ, frequently asked questions. We posted this on the website to hopefully answer a lot of the questions, um, inform the public about what is UDF, unidirectional flushing? Why are city crews out there opening water valves and hydrants and flooding the streets? You know, how does it affect the, and the residents themselves? What are the impacts? What can, what are we doing to minimize those impacts? Why can't we, um, um, save the water? And, um, are we polluting the bay with the water? And, and you can tell we're not because we're dechlorinating the water, like was said in the video and shown on, on those photos. So this, this is hopefully going to be very informative to the public and we can modify it over time depending on some of the questions and input that, that comes in as well. Next slide. Uh, next slide. Yeah, and this is just a reminder that, whoop, back one more. There we go. Yeah, this is just a reminder that, um, you know, we do monitor our water quality, um, constantly. We produce an annual report, the Water Quality, um, Consumer Confidence Report. We collect and test 40 samples of water a month throughout the system. We also monitor five entry points. There's five entry points where we get water into our city system from SFPUC. Um, we also test and monitor the water in the tanks and the pump stations as well. Additionally, you've seen these big backflow preventer devices at a lot of the commercial, um, projects. Those, um, the purpose of those is so that water doesn't get sucked back into the water line from either a business or from a resident. Individual water meters have check valves in them to, to keep, um, the water from flowing back in there. So that's another measure that we do to keep our water lines clean. And on the website, we have these, um, quality, water quality reports dating back to 2013. And since that time, there are zero samples have, um, tested, um, for any contaminants. And we've had, um, all samples have been tested negative for coliforms. So our water is great water here in the city. And that's it.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Broll. Any questions from the council for our director? Councilmember Riley.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation and thank you for all of your work hard to keep us have safe water to use. I just had, uh, someone email me regarding the brown wa, brown water. My question for you is, if the water is brown, can this be safe to use?
Yes, no, that's a very good question. The water is safe to drink. Typically, the discoloration is caused by rust or corrosion within the pipes. But there's nothing in the, the pipes itself that is, um, harmful, um, for anyone's health. The, the water still gets treated at the treatment plant, gets chlorinated and all the other, um, unhealthy, um, impurities are taken out. These are more visual, um, items that, um, getting out with the flush.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, if you can go back a few slides to the diagram that showed the pipes and the hydrants.
Back, back, um, with the comparison between, there we go.
Correct. That one, yep. So just to clarify with unidirectional flushing, basically you would have to shut off, you know, the upper left valve and open up. You'd have to basically repeat the process, shutting off different valves, opening them back up.
Correct.
To make sure that the water's flowing through every.
Right. Yeah, Len and his guys go out there, like I said, they put together a plan and they have our water system all laid out and they have each one of these reaches identified. It takes his crews to go out there and turn off certain valves and then open certain valves, uh, open certain hydrants to, um, force the water through these.
Okay. And then you mentioned that currently the city's working on zone four, I believe, is the largest zone. Are, were the other zones already completed or are those next in line?
No, no, that's a very good question. I failed to mention that. So, um, the goal is that, um, next year, um, we will do zones one through three. Um, like I said, they're, uh, geographically a little bit smaller. It's a steeper section of the city. And the, the hope is that we can get that completed next year and then we will alternate. The plan is to alternate, um, every year. So we'll do zones one through three one year and then zone four the next.
So each pipe would basically be, um, trained every other year.
That's, that's the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very well. Anyone else? Councilmember Nguyen.
I understand the cost differences or the staff allocation differences. Like, it's quite obvious the value, right? It's literally clear, uh, compared to the other techniques. But it seems like to me, I could be wrong here, that, uh, it requires additional time, right? Cause you have to kind of not just plan things out, uh, which is more hours there, but also the execution of that plan, right? You're going to have crews have to in phase move in and out. Like, what's the difference in costs if you, you know, you know what that looks like?
Um, I don't know the exact quantity, but just in general, um, like I said, this, um, method saves about 40% of water compared to conventional flushing and obviously does a much better job, um, of, of the cleansing. Yes, it is more labor intensive. Len has to juggle his crews doing this work with his other activities and other functions and other responsibilities in the city. So that's why it takes, you know, ideally around two months, but, um, given, you know, other, um, workload that he has, it, you know, stretch that. But, um, the cost in general is, um, you know, obviously absorbed as part of the, um, water fund. It's, it's an operating cost as part of the water fund.
Part of the enterprise?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, all right. No other comments? We'll try to take some public comment, if any?
There are none.
Okay, very well.
Mr. Mayor, though, maybe, maybe this will help too a little bit i- in terms of quantifying. So the, the water, you know, kind of cost of doing business, right? To keep our water pure and things. We, we did calculate, laid it and it's about a $73,000, um, amount of water that's lost to flush zone four. Um, if we went to the, um, kind of conventional way that takes more water, that would be, you know, three, four times as much. So, you know, it could be up, upwards of 300, $350,000 of lost water versus 75, 73, 75,000 of lost water.
Okay, bring it back to the council. Any further comments? Anyone wants to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is just an informational.
Oh, it's just information. I thought, I'm sorry. Okay, never mind. So it's already getting done as we speak here.
That is correct.
Very well. All right, let's get rid of those rusty waters. Thank you so much for the update, Director Broll. Uh, item number 10, destination of a voting delegates and up to two altern, alternates for the 2025 League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce our city clerk, Ms. Elaine Tran for the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. The item before you this evening is the appointment of a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo General Assembly. Next slide, please. The city is a member of the League of California City, also known as CalCities or simply the League. CalCities provide advocacy, training and resources to cities across the state. The League also offers access to best practices, practical tools and opportunities for local officials to connect with policy experts through the meeting, through meetings and webinars, helping cities collectively address challenges facing communities across California. Next slide. This year, the League's California, uh, the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo will be held on October 8th through 10th in Long Beach. It is the largest gathering of city officials in California, offering a chance to learn, network and help shape League policy. The General Assembly is scheduled for October 10th, is when member cities discuss and vote on resolution that guide CalCities' policy direction to train the quality, um, responsiveness and vitality of local government. Next slide. Resolutions, uh, give city a direct way to shape CalCity policies. General resolution must be submitted at least 60 days before the conference and supported by five or more member cities or individual members. These general resolutions are then shared with all member cities and staff review them to provide council with recommendations, um, and concurrence ahead of conference. The voting delegate and alternate then cast the city's vote at the General Assembly. According to CalCity staff, no general resolution was received for this year's conference. However, a petition resolution may still be submitted during the conference with signatures from voting delegates representing at least 10% of member cities, which must be submitted to CalCity president no later than 24 hours before the start of the General Assembly. Next slide. The voting delegate represents the city of Millbrae and casts the city's vote on all resolution during the General Assembly. Each member city has one vote. With council approval, a city official who is registered for the conference may be appointed as the voting delegate and up to two alternates. If the voting delegate is unable to serve, an alternate will step in. Currently, Mayor Fang, councilmembers Rinaldi, uh, Riley, Nguyen, as well as city manager Williams are registered to attend. Next slide. Staff recommends that the council by motion appoint a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the CalCities Annual Conference General Assembly. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Just a little bit of additional information. As, as our city clerk mentioned, there are no resolutions, um, at this point in time for this conference. But this would be the point in time that if there were resolutions to consider, we'd be presenting those, uh, to the city council, uh, for discussion and recommendation that then whoever the voting delegate would be, would then carry that vote at the approval of a majority of the city council. So, um, just a little bit more information for you, how this, how this works.
Okay, so, you know, I think the CalCities Conference is, um, October 7th or 8th? 8th, 9th and 10th?
Is the 8th through the 10th?
Yeah, 8th, 9th and 10th. So we still have time for, um, these resolutions could, could come in. Um, but I think at this time it's, if anyone wants to volunteer to be the voting delegate, um, just in case there's a resolution to be voted on.
I was going to make the recommendation that you be the delegate, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate the nomination, but, uh, I respectfully decline. If, uh, someone else would like to be the voting delegate. Appreciate it, though.
And Mr. Mayor, if, if there isn't anyone, city managers can also. So if you need me to take one for the team, this is just insurance.
I'd like to recommend the city manager.
There you go. That's it.
And if there is, I'd be happy. And obviously, if we do get. If we do get a resolution, I, I will be bringing that or, or, uh, consulting with, with you, Mayor, and the full city council in a notice meeting to, uh, provide direction.
Right. I mean, I think it, it would be a good idea if there's a resolution to be voted on, then bring it back in front of this council. I think we've got one more meeting, um, the second, and the second meeting of September, um, so that we can discuss some of the important aspects as to what's important to City of Millbrae. So, um, thank you so much for the volunteerism there to be the voting delegate. Anyone wants to be a backup, just in case?
It's really not that big of a responsibility. You just show up and cast a vote if there's something to vote on.
It's the morning of the last day of the conference.
Yeah.
So it would be the morning of the 10th.
I think they serve lunch, right?
I just don't want that to be in a conflicts of, uh, one of the sessions. But, um, but anyhow, if, uh, if Mr. Williams is, is willing to be the voting delegate, I, we certainly appreciate it.
Willing to step up as the alternate?
Be nice to have. Thank you so much, Councilmember Rinaldi as the first alternate. All right, so I think that settles it. Anything else? Do we need to vote on anything?
Just a, a motion and a vote. If technical required and, and the League requires that, by the way.
Okay, so the motion is to have, uh, city manager Tom Williams to be the voting delegate and Councilmember Rinaldi as the first backup. That's the motion. We got Councilmember Rinaldi and then the second from Mr. Hollibur. Your votes? A, a public comment? Just in case.
There are no public comments on this item, sir.
Very well. There we go.
The city council designate city manager Williams as the voting delegate and council member Stephen Rinaldi as the alternate for the 2025 League of California City Annual Conference Expo. Motion passed with a 5-0.
All right, thank you very much. That wraps it. And, uh, we'll start with council comments. Who would like to volunteer? Councilmember Nguyen.
And so I had, I had a chance to, again, canvass the, uh, business district in, uh, by Broadway and spoke to a bunch of, uh, owners. And the sediment seems to be improved compared to, I would say, a couple of months ago. Uh, one example is, uh, Momo. Uh, I think they recently opened, but they talked about how business was bustling. Another one I, um, I had a chance to talk to was, uh, Sweet Indulgence. I'm not sure if you guys know where that is. It's corner of, uh, I think it's, it's, it's right across the street from Momo. And, uh, they, they, it looks like their business is doing well too after speaking with them. So, uh, overall, uh, pretty good. And, uh, we hope to canvass some more and, uh, be able to, uh, get a set, get basically sediment of, uh, business and just keep an eye on that. But, uh, so far, so good. The other, other, uh, uh, event I intended was this, uh, this talk hosted by, uh, former Judge Mark Forecombe. Uh, he, he's in the 201 Chadbourne Senior Center and I've, uh, had a chance to talk to many of the senior, uh, senior residents and, uh, what concerned them. We had this long talk for about two hours, discussed, uh, things that mattered to the seniors. And it seems like, uh, from that talk that the seniors are in the same, on the same page as everyone else. Like, all the things that matter to us, like, uh, fixing potholes, making sure the water bill's low, all that, uh, is all the, the major concerns. So, uh, nothing out of the ordinary and, uh, I hope to be able to do more of these talks going forward. Thanks.
Thank you for the update. Anyone else? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Yeah, just a couple of quick shout outs. I know we had a month off, so lots happened since, um, first and foremost, want to thank everyone that came out to National Night Out to support our first responders. It's great seeing all of them out there, great being able to hang out with them, let them know how much we appreciate them and their service. Next, I want to, uh, talk about BPAC real quick and just thank all my colleagues regionally from BPAC, uh, as well as our local BPAC here in Millbrae for the time effort you guys put in to help make roads safer, uh, for both pedestrians and bicyclists. And also thank my council members, uh, for your vote tonight to push the project forward. Last but not least, well, not last but not least, I also want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for an excellent job on the Art and Wine Festival. A couple of special shout outs to the Fredianis. Thank you for continuing the tradition and all the hard work you put into it. Also Janet Fogarty, Annie Aliva, uh, Albert Yim, Quigs. There's many more that I'm forgetting to mention, but it was an excellent event and without all your service and dedication, hard work that you put into it, these events wouldn't happen. And last but not least, I want to talk about Mills Estate Planning. It's been a very thorough process and a lot of engagement from the community. We received a lot of good feedback over the last two meetings and I'd encourage those people that want their voices heard to attend these events. It's been publicly broadcasted, uh, talked about at great length and I encourage people to show up these events and get your voices heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the update. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, not too much to, uh, report after the recess, but just a couple of comments. There was a public comment earlier today about, um, the tree maintenance. There was a public comment earlier today about the tree maintenance, I believe, at Spur Trail, Sir Optimus Park area. And I received an email about that as well. So maybe we could do some type of tree survey, especially kind of the back part of Sir Optimus Josephine Waugh Park that doesn't get a lot of foot traffic, to make sure that those trees are healthy. There's also, I think, been some confusion about food trucks. Some of them disappeared, and then some of them came back. So it might be good to have some type of a, an update at one of the upcoming council meetings to provide that update to the public as well, so everyone is informed of what's been going on. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Riley.
Hello. I want to share something with you for all the people live here or are in our city, because there is incentive for earthquake, earthquake prevention. The state government gave you $300,000 grant if you can do earthquake prevention. Depending on your income, if your income is low, they can give you up to $10,000. So this program end up October 1st. And if you want to receive this information, please let me know. Also, there's an incentive for 7,500 for EV car, for electricity car. If you want to buy it, buy before last day of September. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the update. It's just a little update on my part as well, on the SB 63, which is the regional measure for the stopgap funding for the fiscal cliff of all the major transit system. The Sematell County has decided to opt in to the SB 63. I believe the final bill has been crafted and it's been printed, and it's going to get voted on by the legislature probably Thursday evening and Friday morning as well. And it's going to include some degree, a, a pretty good, robust accountability measure, where some MTC Commissioner would likely be appointed to oversee some of these fundings to make sure that all the transit agency are being held accountable as they receive this funding, to make sure transit needs to be successful here in Sematell County. Even though we don't have a board seat or a board seat on, and San Francisco MTA, we're providing the funding that they need in order to keep the transit successful, and especially for those who depend on transit every day. So I'm thankful that we're able to opt in and help ensure transit continues to be available and accessible to every Sematell County residence. We participated in the fair gate opening program sometime in August, I think it was August 25th, if not forgotten. And, you know, the TA was able to provide $10.3 million to fund the entire, all five stations here in Sematell County to have all these fair gates installed. And these fair gates are an important investment to ensure that transit continue to be accessible and safe, and also ensuring that there's no more fair evasion, keeping it clean and keeping it safe is a high priority for Sematell County. And I'm thankful that the TA was able to put together the funding to fund these fair gates all the way, all $10.3 million. And I'm particularly thankful that the city doesn't have to pay for it. So which is an important aspect to keep these regional transit infrastructure, you know, keeping it safe and keeping it accessible to our residents. Attended the API Lead Event in Atlanta, and I want to just do a little report out that had a great conversation with Assemblymember Mike Fong in lobbying for our VLF. And we're optimistic some of these VLF funds can come back to the city as quickly as possible in this legislative year. And also had a chance to speak to Julie Chu, Congresswoman, and also Tat Lu. Continued to talk to them about the importance of some of the funding that needs to come back to California, specifically Millbrae, because we're still looking for fundings for our water recycling plant. We previously had received $750,000 when Congressman Jackie Speer was in office, and we still need the additional funding to finish out that project. And even though funding coming from federal government to California is, you know, hit and miss a little bit, you know, it doesn't stop the fact that we need to continue to advocate for these funding to come back, because that's important to all of us. So what else is there going on? Seems like, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, if I may, so also, I believe her name was Elaine Ponte, came up and spoke.
Funte, yes.
About dog parks. So I think, and then what the Vice Mayor said, I think on October 14th, which is the first meeting in October, I will bring back to the City Council information item.
Yes.
On our municipal code and things that we are enforcing. You know, I think it's coming out of COVID. We've really opened up. We get a lot of complaints about dogs not being on leashes. Dogs must be on leashes in all of our parks. They're allowed in our parks, but they must be on leashes. Dogs are actually prohibited by the municipal code in any of our sports fields, so at Taylor, any of the elementary schools, and then the food truck. So I'll, I'll bring back on, on that first meeting in October, just a series of, of municipal code items that are kind of hot button issues right now to provide information to, to the council and the community.
Great, excellent.
As a heads up.
Okay, very well. Thank you so much. And that's sort of the update for today's meeting, unless anyone else have anything else. Just before we adjourn this evening, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our former mayor, Louis Grassberger, who served as the mayor in the city of Millbrae from 1969 to 1970. And Mayor Grassberger turned 96-year-old this past May. And I was fortunate enough to have an opportunity to visit him at his home in the Magnolia and give him a proclamation for Mayor Grassberger Day. And we extend our heartfelt gratitude for his many years of devoted service to our community. And beyond time on the council, he continued to serve Millbrae, including as the president of the Millbrae Lions Club, and most recently attending the Recreation Center grand opening ceremony. And his leadership and dedication have left a lasting impact on our city. And we honor him tonight for his remarkable contributions through his life as a public servant and as a community role model, and his dedication to all of us. So I adjourned this meeting this evening at 9:55 PM in memory of, of Mayor Louis Grassberger. Thank you all.